Alright, so we have our prayer tonight by Mr. Ed Grimes or his guests. Will you please stand for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance, please?
May we pray. Dear gracious heavenly father, Lord, just want to thank you for all your love and grace every day we take for granted. You are the king of kings and lord of lords. And we come to you today asking to be with everybody in this room. If there's a prayer, unanswered need, prayer need, spoken or unspoken, please be with that need. Watch over the families of the people in this room and protect them. Lord, just give us wisdom beyond our ability. Unite this city like it's never been. Cause we can't do it on our own, Lord. We're asking you. We know that we're weak and we can't do this. So give the mayor, this council, the leadership of this city, wisdom beyond our ability to lead this city in a place that everyone will be proud, and everyone will come home, that everybody in the state will shout out about Montgomery. I bring all these requests as you've taught us to pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Wouldn't I take upon a personal privilege, and I'd like to have a moment of solemnity. Would you join me for the victims of the tragedy that we had in New Orleans? And we had a citizen here in Montgomery also that lost his life. So if you would join me in a moment of prayer and our thoughts for those victims. Amen. Thank you. Alright, need a motion for the approval of the December seventeen work session minutes?
Move to approve.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion for the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four regular council meeting?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Minutes are adopted.
The mayor's message, Mayor Reed?
You're on the clock, man.
On the clock. Alright. Happy new year, everybody. Good to see all residents coming out here to take part in local government. Thank you. We hope that everybody had prosperous new year, at least a start to it, and a great holiday season as well. Want to thank all the city councils and citizens for the work that you do each and every day in our city to make it a better community. As we end it twenty twenty four, we start twenty twenty five on a good note because so many of us are working together to enhance the things that really makes our city strong. I want to also piggyback on what the president just mentioned. Our hearts are heavy as we remember the victims of the New Orleans terrorist attack. It's not only shaking communities across the country. Obviously, it's hit home in our state and right in our backyard here in Montgomery. We think of the loss of Drew Dolphin, an Auburn University graduate who attended Alabama Christian Academy. I saw where people just called him a great family member, friend, and neighbor. His memory will not be forgotten. And our condolences go out to the entire family. And in his memory, we want to reaffirm our commitment to holding the values of kindness, unity, and resilience. Governor Kay Ivey has declared tomorrow, Wednesday, January eighth, twenty twenty five, a day of mourning for Drew and his family. And we want to keep them in our hearts and in our thoughts and our prayers as we really think about his honor, his friends, all the positive attributes that they share about him. And we also want to make sure that we continue to monitor those that are in our circles, those who are changing, those who are being influenced by online influences, as well as people who are acting out. When we can give them help, let's try to give them help before they not only hurt themselves, but that they hurt innocent bystanders as we saw on New Year's Eve in New Orleans. We will be having some conversations here again about how we make sure that when we're having events downtown Montgomery, that we fortify these areas just because of things that we're seeing across this country and really across the world when it comes to people using vehicles as a weapon. That's problematic for all of us as cities and communities when we come together for parades, we come together to celebrate that you may have people who are willing to inflict harm on innocent victims. That's something no one can ever predict, but we want to try to do our best to prepare for that. Now I want to begin our public safety update this evening. I know all of you have heard the news that interim police chief Jim Grayboys has been named the permanent chief. So as was noted during the work session, we want to congratulate Chief Grayboys on the work that he's been doing. I want to congratulate those in leadership and the rank and file members in the Montgomery Police Department. Think that he's shown outstanding leadership during his tenure, and I'm confident that he will continue to lead the Montgomery Police Department with integrity and vision and a strong commitment to our community's safety. We also have one other announcement. We want to let the community know that we have promoted Jeremy Reed to chief of staff, removing the interim tag from his title. He has served the citizens of Montgomery over the last four months. We're excited about the strides that we continue to make under his leadership as part of our staff. And certainly as we move into twenty twenty five, we want to highlight some of those strides that we made in twenty twenty four in the public safety arena. Want to start with some notable statistics. Homicides decreased by nearly twenty percent in twenty twenty four. Around that eighteen point six, I guess we're at nineteen percent there with fourteen less cases, something that certainly reflects the hard work of many members in the community, working with our law enforcement and working in their own circles of influence to try to bring about more conflict resolution and de-escalation techniques and attributes. Those things are still a work in progress, but we are certainly appreciative of the work that so many have done in this city. We also saw similar progress in the areas of non-fatal shootings. And I want to be clear that one life that we lose to homicide, as we lost one today, is one too many. But our improvement is a step in the right direction. And while we experience positive trends in homicides and non-fatal shootings, one of the areas you've heard me talk about that we need to improve is that, the area of property crime. We've seen about a five point eight percent uptick, or six percent if you round up, in twenty twenty four. But when you take a step back, the overall trend is moving in the right directions, right direction. That's because we have people using their Ring doorbell cameras, other security, they're tapping into our star watch system. We want more people to tap into that through their businesses in their homes, but also through the old school neighborhood watch programs. That's really being thought about, but more importantly, it's being implemented in a way in twenty twenty four that I think has helped us with some of these numbers. And so as we look at some of these stats, and these are just a few, we're not going to rest on this progress. We're not going to get comfortable complacent. It just shows that we're making some positive strides here in the city as we go into twenty twenty five. And we certainly want to make sure that we learn from some of the lessons of last year going into this year as it relates to all types of crime and how it impacts so many people around this community. So our goal on the Chief Grayboys is to make this community safer and to make sure that from a policy perspective and from a results perspective, we're doing everything that we can to do just that. Now I want to turn our attention to an area that has troubled me for the last couple of weeks. Due to the nature around the holiday season of deaths we had around fires. We've had tragic loss of lives in a pair of residential fires in our city. With cold winter months upon us, we want to remind our residents to take fire safety seriously. Want to make sure that you avoid plugging too many devices into a single outlet or a power strip, especially lights and appliances. Inspect your cords and lights for wear or damage. And if you're using space heaters, keep them at least three feet away from flammable objects like curtains, a bedding, even pajamas, and turn them off when leaving your room or going to sleep. Also be reminded to check your smoke alarms monthly to ensure they are functioning properly and replace batteries as needed. If you need some help, reach out to your nearest fire station. We'll make sure that we help you any way that we can, or call three one one, and we'll help get some assistance over to your residents. But together, these simple actions can save lives, and we want everyone to be sure to do their part to keep themselves, their family, and their neighbors safe. Next slide. Also like to recognize the progress that we made in twenty twenty four with our executive order remitting fines, fees, and costs for various municipal convictions. From April fifth through December thirty first, twenty twenty four, almost eight hundred citizens had eight hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred and four dollars remitted across three thousand six hundred and nine cases. The order applies exclusively to municipal fees associated with most non-DUI traffic tickets, misdemeanor possessions of marijuana, and Class C misdemeanors. Only fines and fees assessed before January one, twenty fourteen, are eligible for relief, excuse me. This order reflects a broader change in how we approach justice in Montgomery, transitioning us from a solely punitive force to one that encourages a change in behavior while mitigating long-lasting detrimental consequences. These initiatives help ensure that financial burden does not dictate who succeeds and who struggles in our city. Now, as we move into twenty twenty five, I would also like to take a moment to recognize this month as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. This month, we come together to shine a light on an issue that affects millions of lives around the world and impacts communities, including ours. Human trafficking is a heinous crime that robs individuals of their freedom and dignity. It exploits the most vulnerable among us, women, children, and marginalized individuals, and it demands our collective action. This month serves as a powerful reminder of our shared responsibility to be vigilant and proactive. Our efforts must include educating the public, equipping our law enforcement with tools they need, and ensuring survivors have access to the support they deserve as they rebuild their lives. By joining forces, sharing knowledgeable, and empowering one another, we can create a safer and more compassionate Montgomery. Together, we will amplify the voices of survivors, hold perpetrators accountable, and strengthen the bonds of our community. Thank you to everyone who has dedicated their time, energy, and hearts to this cause. Your work is not only impactful, but essential in building a future where freedom and dignity are rights upheld for all. As a fantastic year of economic development in twenty twenty four concluded, and twenty twenty five is already off to a great start, we announced a two point four million dollar northward expansion of the Riverfront Greenway Trail. The planned extension to Shady Street Trailhead Park underscores Montgomery's commitment to leveraging green infrastructure for sustainable, economic, environmental, and cultural benefits. Upon completion, the expanded trail will connect thousands of workers and residents to key destinations, fostering recreation, economic activity, and community events. With over two hundred and fifty thousand visitors annually, the trail generates an estimated eight to nine point six million dollars in economic impact each year. The enhanced trail will be a catalyst for revitalizing Montgomery's waterfront, attracting new investments, and supporting the city's long-term economic sustainability. This expansion aligns with the city's broader goals of fostering inclusive growth, revitalizing the downtown area, and building a sense of pride and place for its residents. And now, for a pair of new announcements on some upcoming events in note. The City of Montgomery's Neighborhood Services Department will be hosting the mayor's annual neighborhood banquet on February sixth, two thousand and twenty five. And as you can see, we must have a larger budget because we have upgraded to where we are to the Renaissance. I don't know where it came from, but I thank the council for approving it or contributing to it, or whoever else may have been in support of that. We've come a long way from the multiplex. But this event will have tickets on sale for twenty-five dollars per person. You can either go through Eventbrite or the QR code on our screen. Should you need more information about the event, you can contact Neighborhood Services Administrative Support Specialist Cynthia McCollister. We look forward to seeing you there and celebrating the accomplishments and achievements of our many great neighborhoods and our neighborhood leaders across our city. I would also like to close out tonight's message with another invitation. The City of Montgomery invites you to the twenty twenty five State of the City Address on Tuesday, January twenty eighth, at six P M. This annual event is a pivotal moment for our community, offering a comprehensive look at the progress we've made, the challenges we face, and the vision that will guide us into the future. Held this year the Alabama Shakespeare Festival, the address will highlight the initiatives that have strengthened our neighborhoods, revitalized our economy, and enhanced the quality of life for all Montgomery residents. Don't miss this opportunity to hear about the bold strategies and transformative projects shaping our city. So whether you're a longtime resident, a business leader, or someone interested in the growth of Montgomery, this event is your chance to engage with a roadmap for our collective success. Let's come together to celebrate our achievements, reflect on our journey, and recommit to building a stronger, brighter Montgomery. Mark your calendar and be a part of this significant evening. Thank you all again so much, and Mr. President, thank you for the time and opportunity.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you. Any special committees to report? None? Alright, item number one, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, item one is the consent agenda. And if there are no requests to remove one for discussion, then it is appropriate for a motion.
I need a motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item three, three month review.
Madam Clerk, could we just take the two?
You want to take those two?
Take those two?
At this time, yes, sir. Resolution approving contract with community initiatives for two hundred dollars for Project Live Free USA.
Need to make amendment on that one. Two hundred dollars.
He said two hundred dollars.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
I thought I said two hundred. Did I not say two hundred thousand?
We're gonna dial them real quick.
Getting ahead of myself. Two hundred thousand dollars for Project Live Free USA for community violence intervention.
Alright, need a motion. Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. The second one is a resolution approving the contract with U A B Hirsken School of Medicine for three hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars for opioid abatement program.
Alright, need a motion?
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Why are we on this opiate?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Jim Wright.
What's happening with the lawsuit, Mayor? The open lawsuit we got that we should be getting money out of?
Yeah, we've got the money. It's been settled. Part of that money went to COSA, Council for Substance Abuse. And I forgot. Oh, the other half went to U A B to help us on prevention and treatment of those who are suffering from this abuse. So it went to those two entities.
Thank you. Alright, next item.
Item three, three month review of Crown Legacy Studio and Art at thirty-eight, thirty-four Harrison Road.
Mister?
Oh, yeah. Nothing at this time. Everything's so good. We can close this item out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I get my time extended?
You just said you're closing out.
You're good. You're good.
He's saying he'll give you two more weeks. You won't come back?
He's just coming in.
Item four, thirty day review of Roadrunner One at thirty-four oh one Woodley Road.
Ms. Mitchell? Uh, come on up, sir. Public communication, item number four. Your name, sir, for the record. Okay, so you signed up. And your name, ma'am, for the record?
Angela Exter with South Line.
I just asked for your name.
Mr. President?
I love you too.
Mr. President, they have did everything I asked, so I would like to close them out.
Alright, guys, good to go. Good luck with your business.
Item five, ordinance amending section twenty-one dash thirty-two of the Code of Ordinances, composition, appointment, and term of office of members of planning commission.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Item six, ordinance repealing ordinance number forty dash twenty twenty four gun mandate.
Alright, Ms. Pruitt, you're gonna withdraw and introduce a new one, bring it out of committee?
I just want to repeal this one, and then we're gonna introduce this one, Mr. Calhoun. So I'm gonna make a motion to.
Adopt.
Yeah, adopt.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
Just for the sake of the order, what's, tell me the difference in what we're repealing and what we get? This is just the first I've seen. I haven't a chance to review nor go over with Chief Grayboys. So just trying to get a sense of what the difference is between what we had.
Well, one of the big things is, Mayor, we talked about holding the gun for thirty days. In this one, we don't because that was in direct conflict with state law. So it addresses that part of it. It addresses why we are asking for the IDs, the identifications on a minor, where, as y'all know, minors cannot carry a weapon. This one is just, I think, a little bit better written. I think it gives us the ability, if there is a court case, it gives us the ability to actually do something with it.
Do we think it still helps us get more guns off the street?
You know, if we use it, if we use the law, because the one that we have today, we're not using. And if we use this law, I think it would help us get some guns off the street. If we get one gun, it's worth it, right?
Amen.
So, you know, I think this is the one that the legal department feels is better written and easier to defend. I think it's still gonna be difficult, but I think they feel more comfortable with this one.
Okay. I'll circle it without saying it turning.
Have you seen it, Chief Drabos? Ms. Exter, I think you're down to speak on this item. You want to come on up?
See, you come on up to the mic.
You pass it out.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry.
I did meet with Legal to.
Go ahead, Chief.
I met with Legal to discuss this, and I did give them my input. I have not seen them since they re-formatted it, so I would want to see it. But the input that I gave was directly related to taking the weapon if somebody does not have their ID, and then the conditions under which a person would be able to reacquire the weapon, but also about giving us some teeth to hold people accountable who are attempting to conceal their ID at the same time they're attempting to conceal a weapon.
Okay. And I think what Mr. Pruitt is gonna do tonight, we're not gonna vote on this. I think you want to introduce it.
I want to introduce it.
We'll put it in. It's a copyright here, Chief.
I even talked to the mayor about some ideas about who we can meet with. You know, one of the ideas I had was to put this into public safety and invite our attorneys, invite the A G's office and the D A's office, and sit around the table and say, hey, does this thing work?
Mr. President, would this be considered still in our, is this gonna be in our public safety committee, or are you just gonna keep it up at the council?
I think we just pulled it out, right?
You have not pulled it out.
We haven't been to the.
We have before us the motion to adopt the ordinance repealing the ordinance, the one that's currently in, that has been currently adopted.
Now, Ms. Pruitt, this is what I would like to do. It is just consensus. It's your, if we're looking at this new one, we have in a committee. I know we're gonna be two weeks, we're gonna carry it over. If we can bring it out, if we just leave the one in place until we get this on the books.
Why are y'all so fascinated with leaving the law books that we're not using?
I mean, it's up to us to pass the law, not to enforce it. It's not up to us to enforce it.
But we're not enforcing the law, guys.
Alright, let's go ahead and take a vote on it.
Yeah, let's vote it and be done.
Vote it up and down. Okay, have a motion to, what was your motion?
Motion to adopt the ordinance repealing the ordinance.
Okay, all in favor of the appeal, please raise your hand.
Five.
Alright, all opposed, have the same, right?
I mean, four. So the repeal is carried.
So now, do we want to put this into, do we want to leave it in the committee and do?
Hold on. I just want to introduce it. Can we introduce it?
You're, the proposed ordinance, which nobody's seen, hadn't seen a copy of it, was put into committee. So in order to introduce it, you're gonna have to make a vote to pull it out of the committee.
You're right. See, see, I'm gonna make a motion to pull the gun ordinance out of the public safety committee.
Okay, have a motion to pull it out of public safety committee. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Alright, so now we need to introduce it to the floor, and we'll carry it over for two weeks.
And the clerk needs a copy of it.
Okay.
I need a copy of it right now.
Right now?
Yes, sir.
She got it ready.
That's the only way I can certify what I have, is what y'all know.
You can't be passing out these ghost ordinance, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so you're introducing this and carrying it. Wait a minute.
Hello. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
No, I was trying to think procedure three because we've not seen one. Y'all put a thicket of the imagination ordinance into committee.
Yeah. And so that was my point when I said just leave the one that we have on the book, whether we enforce it or not. We have something until we pass the new ordinance. So, you know, we didn't have an ordinance. We said we was gonna put it in committee, so we.
So, you know, we didn't have an ordinance, we said we was gonna put it in committee, so we repealed something, now we have nothing. And I understand that this council passed this unanimously, nine oh, and now we repealed it and we have nothing on the books. That was the only point about leaving this until we got the new ordinance before us to vote on it.
We never seen it. It was never been committed. We did some trick.
That's correct.
Y'all stop trying to confuse this council like y'all had a rendezvous two weeks ago.
A meeting date?
So we're going to have to consider it a new business and therefore introducing it and carrying it over would be the appropriate way.
Okay, all right.
Because you said it has to come up as new business and that's council meeting, correct?
And no, if you're introducing it tonight, it will come up as old business.
That's fine.
And carrying it over into the old business.
That's fine.
You want to read it?
Yes, ma'am, you want to read it, Ms. Blaylock? Go ahead and introduce it.
You want me to read the whole order?
Whatever you, whatever you need to, yeah, whatever you need to do to introduce it, to carry, to put it on this.
Um, ordinance establishing gun identification and procedures?
Correct.
Okay. And it's carried over to the next meeting.
Thank you.
So now we go to item seven.
Mr. President?
Hello, Ms. Mitch?
Ms. Blaylock, I think you, um, on my vote, I was a no on bringing it out of committee. I think you said that the vote was, I want to make sure you got my vote correct because I should have stayed in committee. Yes, I was a no on that.
Bring that to my attention because I didn't miss you.
Yes, ma'am.
Item number seven has been withdrawn. Item number eight, resolution appro, approving substantial amendments to the HUD program years twenty twenty-one, twenty-three action plan for three hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty-one cents to allocate to the Fairview Farmers Market.
Okay, council, you heard the explanation in the work session. Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Thank you. Item nine, resolution appointing John Stanley to the Board of Adjustment.
Jim Wright?
Move to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Ten, resolution declaring authorizing and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lines.
Move to adopt. All in favor?
Move to adopt. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right.
All right, I want to, you've got an ordinance in front of you for the, uh, to make up for a team of the going to legislate this year, have a mayor and a council go with one, and, uh, this one that's here, Mr. President. I think everybody's got a copy of it. We can put it on tonight.
Just put it on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, I'll carry it over here.
Shall I read it for the public so that they will know? You want me to read it for the public so they will know?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Ordinance requiring council resolution or ordinance in order to request legislative laws or amendments pertaining to the city of Montgomery, its citizens or personnel.
All right, all right, so we carry this item over.
Carry it over.
All right.
And I do have contingencies.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman. I have put before you, but I, District Calvin has added some to his. For District Three, one thousand to Chamber of Commerce for Lacy Boyd Parade. Eight thousand to Southern Leadership Development Institute. District Four, five hundred to the Montgomery Music and Arts Foundation for M L K Birthday Bash. District Five, two thousand to Friends of the Theater for M L K Celebration. Two, these are the ones that he's added. Two thousand to Make a Difference Incorporated, two thousand to Manhood, two thousand, W R C, what's W R C, sir?
Westside Reservation.
District Six, one thousand to Status Elite Dance Studio, one thousand to Positive Parents Have Power, one thousand to Jamari Terrell Williams Foundation, one thousand to West Alabama Jubilee Community Association.
Mr. President, I, um,
Ms. Johnson?
I neglected to add one thousand to Young Men on a Mission.
Young Men on a Mission.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President.
Ms.?
Um, a thousand to Quiet Storm. Out of contingency, please.
All right, Ms. Pruitt?
Ms. Blaylock, a thousand dollars to Quiet Storm.
Okay.
And a thousand dollars to, uh, New Beginnings Ministry, please.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Semask?
Five thousand dollars to Jag High School.
How much?
Five thousand.
To?
Jag High School.
And District Five is gonna do five thousand dollars Jag High School on to. Mr. Grimes?
Thousand dollars to Quiet Storm.
All right, anyone else? All right, need a motion for approval?
Motion approved.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, anything else from the council?
None, sir, that's all I have.
All right, any council member have a thing?
No, ma'am.